As far as City Council Public Haring will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Valerie LeBeau?
Long?
Yep.
Pelletier?
Here.
Viveras?
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Just wanted to point of information, Council Vice President LeBeau is on her way. Counselor Camara, Joseph Camara, is on work business, out of town, so he will not be joining us this evening. First item on our agenda is a curb removal of Anthony D. Silva of 115 Earl Street for the removal of curbing. The petitioner has an existing 12-foot driveway opening on the north side of the property facing Earl Street and would like to extend the driveway an additional eight feet to the east to improve off-street parking access and provide additional off-street parking spaces. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause significant adverse effect to on-street parking in the area. Is there a motion to open?
Motion open.
Motion open. The hearings were made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents? Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak? Calling all opponents? Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. The hearings were made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Item number two was Walid Asai of 2809 Highland Avenue for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner has an existing 10-foot driveway opening on the west side of the property facing Highland Avenue and would like to widen the driveway with additional 12 feet to improve off-street parking access. The curb will be removed south of the existing driveway, removal not to impact existing utility pole, and north of the driveway, not to extend beyond the property line. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause significant adverse effect to on-street parking in the area. Is there a motion open?
So moved.
Motion open has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents? Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
The hearing be closed.
Motion to close. The hearing made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Item three is Pat Mayall of 257 Rathgar Street for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner has an existing 12-foot driveway opening on the north side of the property facing Rathgar Street and would like to widen the driveway an additional eight feet to improve off-street parking access and provide additional off-street parking spaces. The proposed work does not act, the proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause a significant adverse effect on on-street parking in the area. Motion open? Motion open has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents? Proponents? Hearing none. Any opponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all opponents? Hearing none.
Move the hearing be closed.
Motion to close. The hearings were made by Counselor Stephen Camara, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. It's six o'clock?
Yes.
For the City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Here.
Stephen Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Yes, here.
Valerie LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Yep.
Pelletier?
Here.
Viveras?
Here.
President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda is citizens' input. First person to sign up to speak, Jenna DeCosta of 433 Ludlow Street, Fall River, regarding item 20 on our agenda. Come on down.
Just one, maybe this microphone right there. Yeah, it's ready. You can have a seat. Just, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jenna DeCosta, and I am representing Bristol Elder Services, and I'm here to ask for support on a project that has been ongoing with our agency to make Fall River a dementia-friendly community, and we're also looking to expand that to create an age- and dementia-friendly community, so that way people of all ages and abilities can feel safe and supported in our community. And this is item number 20 on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I can answer any questions if they are needed.
Councilman C. Three, Counselor Camara.
Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. DeCosta, for attending. Also, Nancy Munson is in the audience. She's the executive director of Bristol Elder Services, and I met with both of them earlier in the month, and we discussed making Fall River a dementia-friendly community and also expanding it to be both age- and dementia-friendly. Clearly, an important thing as our population ages, that the community be sensitive to the issues that surround people, both with dementia and people who are becoming elders. All of us hopefully will be there, and some of us are there now. So I thought it was an appropriate thing to have a resolution supporting their effort. The resolution is in our packet this evening, and there's backup information, because as Mrs. DeCosta just stated, she's also here if you have any questions. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. DeCosta. Next person to sign up to speak is Celeste Aruda, 239 Melrose Street, Fall River, regarding Melrose Street.
Hello. My name is Celeste Aruda. I've been here before, once before, requesting that Melrose Street be fully completed. We've been living at 239 Melrose Street for 30 years. When we built our home, we were told by the city that they couldn't build the road at that time, finish the road, but that they would eventually do it. Now, they did come down a couple of times and put down tar for us to drive over, because everything is dirt and stuff. But we haven't gotten our street. It's a matter of 300, 400 feet of road that just needs to be finished. It was, it was all cleared down by the city back in the 1970s. They put the sewer system down. We built our home in 1988. They gave us a street address. We had the land surveyed. The street is accepted down to, all the way down to 24. Now, we get no public service. We have to drag our barrels 300, 400 feet up to the top of Melrose in Chester Street. We do not get mail service down at our house. We do not get snowplow, salting, sanding. We have to worry about making sure it's cleared all the way up to the street. We're just getting too old to do all that stuff. And I think after 30 years, we deserve to have the street finished. Like I said, the sewer system was put down there and everything, and it was cleared. What's there now is just overgrowth. The city is working on a drainage issue, which a lot of the rainwater comes rushing down our driveway, and it just, you know, washes everything away, which is okay. But our main concern is, we need the street, you know. I mean, we pay taxes, you know. Everybody in Fall River has their own street. We don't have any access, and we're starting to get worried that we're going to have a medical emergency one time. If there's snow, three, four, five inches of snow, which is no big deal to anybody else in Fall River, but to us, we cannot park at our house, because we'll never be able to get out. We have to park way up on Chester Street, which is like 400, 500 feet away. Now, I have an elderly, my elderly mother lives with me. We already had an emergency situation where we had to call an ambulance, and it wasn't in the snow time, thank God, but they had trouble getting down to her. They had to call for backup. They had to take her to the hospital. It wasn't anything serious, but if there is a time, even if it's just one time, where ambulance or any kind of emergency vehicle has to get to us...
15 seconds.
...they're not going to be able to. So again, we're just going to keep, we're going to just keep trying, you know, pursuing for this street to be finished.
Thank you. Councilman C. One, Counselor Kadeem.
Mr. President, through you to the clerk, the last time this issue was brought up to us, I had requested that the, either the engineer or the planning department, give us some type of notification as to whether or not, I know the resident is claiming that the road was accepted all the way down. Can we just get confirmation, or have we received any confirmation of that? Do you know?
Oh, can I don't recall.
Okay. So if we could just get confirmation that it goes all the way down to those residents, and if we can also get just an update as to what the plan of action would be for, I guess getting that into at least a binder course down, and then final paving. With that I yield.
Thank you. Councilman C. Three, Counselor Camara.
Yeah, just to add a little bit more information, Celeste, your husband is Greg.
Yeah, he couldn't make it.
So I've been in touch with both Celeste and Greg on this. I've been in touch with city administration. Mrs. Viveras is very familiar with this issue.
Yeah, she did come down once.
She's been there. Mr. J.R. Frye, the city engineer, has been there. Mr. Frye has indicated to me this week in a letter that they are proceeding with the plan for the complete implementation of this, but it is taking, obviously, it's taking a long time, certainly an unacceptably long time for Celeste and Greg, and they certainly are entitled to have access to their home and have access to emergency vehicles and snow plowing and trash collection and everything else. And so it's really becoming a situation that, you know, maybe the council needs to submit an item, a resolution, that would bring the item to public works and transportation. But if you did want more information, this is Viveras that could provide more at this time. If you prefer waiting, we could submit a resolution to have public works and transportation meet, to have all parties update the council on the progress toward this end.
I think that'd be appropriate, Counselor, since the respective parties that you identified, such as the engineer, et cetera, are not present right now. So I think it'd be appropriate that we do that and have that discussion for these residents who are concerned.
Well, I've been hoping that it would be done without this extra added attention, but I think it would be appropriate for us to bring this extra added attention, so hopefully that it can be resolved, and hopefully resolved before the bad weather gets, comes back again, as it will.
That would be very much appreciated.
Right.
And if you want to prepare a resolution and give it to the clerk, we'll read it into the record at the end of the meeting. I'll allow it tonight.
And that addresses 239, correct?
Correct, right.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next person to sign up is Danielle LaChance of 286 Concord Street, Fall River, regarding Melrose Street.
Hi. So I want, my name's Danielle LaChance. I am Celeste Aruda's sister. I just want to basic, I'm here to support her and also to reiterate what she said, especially about my mom. My mother's birthday is today. She's 84 years old. She's lived on Melrose Street the majority of her adult life. My father had a house there. It's still there, but she lives with my sister now. So we grew up there, and I take her to a lot of appointments. I have to, it's, she can't walk well. It's, you know, very troubling that she has to use her walker that has wheels, and we have to help her. And like my sister said, she's lived there for 30 years, and I guess, I was afraid the conversation had ended. I was afraid that the city engineer had said this wasn't going to happen, or it wasn't going to happen for one house. So I'm here to advocate for my mother, being that she is a citizen of Fall River her whole life, and she lived in that area, and she has trouble, and I'm here to support my sister. So basically, you guys said everything you had to after she spoke, but I just, thank you.
Thank you very much. Concludes citizens' input for this evening. Next item on our agenda is discussions on the transfers and appropriations. Items two through five on the full council agenda, it is in finance for discussion. No need to refer to full council this evening, because it's already there. We can make our decisions at that point. Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi, welcome.
I think it's on. So what you have in front of you is the final transfer for the year. The transfer includes coverage of the varying departments that have overspent their appropriation. That's okay. Kathy was pointing out the priority matter, number one. I'm looking at number two, which is the transfer and appropriation. So this appropriation is to cover each of the departments that have had some issues with regard to overspending certain of their expenditures that the administration was certainly aware of, and we allowed the over expenditure, knowing that at the end of the year, we would pass a final transfer that is required to be transferred by the 15th of July. And by the way, thank you all for rescheduling for today's meeting from Tuesday. So if you look at number two, the transfer is our community maintenance expenses. That's primarily an increase in disposal and recycling costs. The snow removal salaries and snow removal expenses, as you would have on your appropriation transfer each year. Debt service, because we were having some surpluses in some of the accounts, we were able to pay down the principal on certain of our debt, and we did so. The fire, the $200,000 that you see there, is a small amount of over expenditures somewhat due to the active shooting program that wasn't budgeted, and it also includes the money set aside. We have received a quote from Mr. Hathaway for the transmitters that were brought up during the budget hearings that were not budgeted, and as, again, we had some monies that were left over, so we were able to provide those dollars to the fire department in fiscal '19. The insurance account was slightly overspent as a result of an increase in our premium due to the flood at Dorfey. Police salaries were overspent. The police salary over expenditure, the chief sent me a summary. It is somewhat of a mixed bag. Some of it has to do with the replacement of staff. Some of it has to do with the investigations being more significant in fiscal '19 than they were in '18. $100,000 of it was the money the mayor set aside or provided the police department for the shooting that occurred here down on South Main Street. So overall, it was $547,000. And then the last item that we're asking to make whole is the police expense account. $18,000 of that 22 had to do with the active shooting program that, again, wasn't budgeted but was shared between the police department, the fire department, and the EMS department. So that total transfer was $2,243,294.
Any questions? Councilman C. Five, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Could you just say the fire expenses one more time? Is that what we had talked about it, budget for the both pieces?
$125,000, maybe a little bit more. I didn't bring the exact amount. Was exactly what you brought up, Counselor, during the budget hearing, the transmitters that have dead spaces down on the north end?
North end, but no radios, just the transmitters, correct?
Just the transmitters, as I understand it. Mr. Hathaway and the chief put together the quote, and this was what they indicated their needs were. I know they're, at this particular point, trying to determine where the best line of sight is. The last I heard, I thought it was actually the Somerset Police Station. So that's going to cover that north end that has dead spots.
And I'm sorry, the additional, and the other 75,000 in fire is going to what?
Well, 18,000 or 20,000 of it is going to the active shooting program.
Yep.
Some of the remaining monies have to do with the medical that were overspent this past year, and there was a slight over expenditure in the fuel costs.
Medical insurance?
No, the workman's comp.
Okay. And then on the police, the salaries, 100 of that was for the, after the downtown shooting?
Correct.
And just my opinion on that, for what it's worth, if we do put $100,000 worth of police presence in an area after a shooting that was in front of the courthouse, I'm not sure that that makes a lot of sense. I mean, I understand what the mayor's intent was, but I would rather see that money go towards beefing up patrols in the areas that these people live and do whatever it is that they do. They just happen to be in front of the courthouse. I'm sure that that made the people feel safe down there, but $100,000 seems like an awful lot of salaries after the fact. I'd rather see that go to preventative measures, because I don't think that they were going to go back there and shoot again, but it's my opinion on it. And what was the other 400 and 74?
Some of it were for the replacement of offices for, in particular, when offices call in sick. The investigations for the serious crimes was increased this year over the prior year. The prior year, the expense was 96,000. This year, the chief expended 262,000, so it was significantly more than the prior years and the fact that he had expended. And his retirement buyouts were 217,000, and he had only budgeted 115. So there are a number of areas within the police department salaries that caused the sum total of the 547 being overspent.
And the expenses that was for the active shooter training?
That's correct. I think that was exactly $18,000 that was split between the three departments, and I didn't print the police department detail, but it's 22,000, so it's, I'm sure it's small accounts that were also overspent.
All right, thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Councilman C. One, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you. Just in the future, can we, when we get into the third quarter, could you just give us a heads up as to what you think? And I know it's challenging to figure out where we're going to be, but some of these numbers are pretty significant, looking at a half a million dollars in salaries, and then obviously the debt service and snow removal, which is to be expected anyways, but just so that we know what's coming down the pipeline?
Certainly.
So that on July 15th, we're not just looking at it. So in terms of, I know you don't have a free cash number, but what are you looking at for a surplus in the operating budget?
I don't want to speak to that number at this particular point. We are calculating it. The last warrant was just run last Friday. We certainly don't have all of our receivables in. During the third quarter report, which will now be in August, we'll have a much better idea, and I'll be able to report pretty much what an estimate free cash will be.
All right. Sounds good. With that, I yield.
Anything further from the council?
Pretty much.
Hearing none. That would conclude our finance matter, clerk, correct?
Motion to adjourn.
Two through five?
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. It's 6:15. We can, we're going to jump right into our full council meeting. We don't have to wait till seven tonight, because it's a special meeting. We're going to just roll right through. As far as City Council's special meeting will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Here.
Stephen Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Valerie LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Viveras?
Here.
President Ponti?
Here. If everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda this evening is the mayor in the order establishing spending limits for the revolving funds for fiscal 2020.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Councilman C. One, Counselor Kadeem.
Ms. Sahadi doesn't have to come down, but if she can just nod. With any of these funds, do they, any spending exceed the limits? No, okay.
No, then they're the same as the prior year.
I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Item two, Madam Clerk.
Is a communication from the mayor and an order appropriating FY '19 year-end obligations, which were just discussed in finance.
These items were just discussed in finance.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor and order appropriating $15,000 from the general fund mayor salaries to the small business improvement.
Move to adopt the order.
Actually, there's not, it's not necessary. We have a letter here from Mr. Dion, the executive director of the Community Development Agency, and I'll read it into the record. Mrs. Viveras, please be advised that the Florida Community Development Agency is in receipt of the required paperwork that is needed to process the city's invoice for the Small District Improvement Program dated July 9, 2019. I want to thank you for your cooperation in this matter, and I look forward to a continued partnership, helping small businesses in the city. So at this point, that item is not necessary, according to Mike Dion. So, Councilman C. One?
Thank you. Just curious, I know it's been withdrawn, but I'm just a little curious as to why we would be even transferring money to appropriate money for somebody to get paid that was being covered out of CDA.
I'll ask the city administrator to come down and our CFO to answer that question.
in any special revenue funds so that we would not be, or would not affect the free cash certification. And Mr. Dion said that once the paperwork was received, we would then be reimbursed. So my thought was we would clear up that particular deficit at June thirtieth so the city auditor could present it as a balanced fund. And when those monies were received and that paperwork was received and then the monies were received, we would transfer it back into the city general fund.
But that's, I mean, that's additional work for somebody above and beyond their salary, right?
That's correct.
So I guess I'm still confused as to why we would pay the individual. I mean, the way I understood it is that the individual only gets paid based on all the, I believe it's the facade, right?
That's correct. It's the storefront program.
So the storefront program, when that's all completed, the individual would get paid for it. So why would we pay in advance?
The individual is actually paid on a biweekly basis, and technically, we are billing on a monthly basis. So this particular individual was receiving twenty-six even payments, if you will, regardless of the hours she was working. Mr. Dion was tracking those hours, but some hours, some weeks were over, some weeks were under. But to expedite the payroll system, she was actually paid an equal twenty-six payments.
But how do we know? I guess my issue is that we were told that it's per application that comes in. So I mean, if we have no applications that come in, the individual's receiving salary for that? Because the way it was told to us was it's not a salary, but it's almost like a contracted services for somebody going to the treasurer's office, making sure that they've up to date on their taxes, so you got a certificate of good standing and helping the business owners fill out an application is what we were told.
Counselor, actually, there was a separate agreement for program administration written for this between Community Development Agency and the mayor's office, and the tasks that were to be completed were actually more expansive than that. While the individual was anticipated to be educating the business owners as to the opportunity of the signage storefront improvement program, Mr. Dion and our office felt that while she was there, she should also be educating people about economic development programs that are available, kind of serving as a small business liaison, just because once you start conversation with a small business, one thing leads to another. So she was actually doing more than simply promoting the storefront facade program. And so, again, to Mrs. Sahadi's earlier comments, it was pretty detailed in terms of what she was providing. So it was, the services that were being provided went beyond the storefront improvement program.
So just as one counselor, I, you know, I feel like, you know, truth and advertisement really, really works. And unfortunately, we had a public hearing with the CDA and that we weren't told any of that. There was a public hearing. And this council needs to adopt this stuff. Now we're being told that somebody is doing something completely different. And again, it's more of the same from this administration that essentially wants to find additional monies in different ways to pay people more money than what they're getting paid. I've got an issue with that, and had this not been pulled, then we would have been looking to supplant essentially somebody's additional salary that they shouldn't have been receiving. I mean, this just stinks in all ways, and I take exception to it. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council?
Move to give this item leave to withdraw.
Motion to give item leave to withdraw has been made by Counselor Camaro, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item number four is a communication from the mayor and two appropriation orders. The first is the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the Water Enterprise Fund FY eighteen surplus revenue to the Water Stabilization Fund.
Move to accept the communication and adopt the orders.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Camaro, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And order number two is the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the Sewer Enterprise Fund FY eighteen surplus revenue to Sewer Stabilization Fund.
Move to adopt that order as well?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Camaro, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the mayor and an order appropriating two thousand five hundred twenty dollars from CPA funds undesigned for historic resources preservation projects.
Move to accept the communication and adopt the order.
Motion to accept the communication and adopt the order has been made by Counselor Stephen Camaro, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kilby. Discussion. Counselor on seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you. Do we, in the backup that we received with the agenda states, or the letter from the mayor states essentially that it's an emergency. So when I was just reading it, it looks like there's an overage for the project. Is there any additional emergency with the historical preservation that we need to know about, or is it really just solely overage on construction costs, which I wouldn't necessarily consider constitute an emergency?
Madam City Administrator?
Counselor, we did receive the request from the community preservation group asking us for the additional funds. And my expectation was that because it was a project that was underway and simply had a shortfall in funding, that, you know, the bills needed to be paid and that it would be treated as something that needed to be dealt with as soon as possible.
Again, I mean, as a city council, we're tasked with approving all these financial orders. It's lacking in detail. I don't know what the costs are. I don't know what it is. I'm not going to be approving it. And Council President, with all due respect, I mean, I'm just getting sick and tired of the fact that we're getting information that's not detailed enough, and then, you know, emails get sent out that we're not reading, reading agenda items. Well, I can reassure you that I do read the agenda items. So with that, for any department head that wants to go and send out emails saying that they provide documentation and backup and city councilors don't read them, I take exception to it because I do read it, and we typically don't get enough detail to make educated votes. With that, I will make...
Counselor, I would just interject that we're certainly willing to entertain your questions ahead of the meeting if there's additional information that you'd like to receive. We're by no means trying to keep information from you. Again, this came from CPC.
I get that, but why do I have to have an additional meeting before the city council to have my questions answered? I mean, they're pretty straightforward questions.
Not being just a question, Counselor. That's all we would ask.
Yeah, I mean...
We're here for you.
So there's an emergency? What's the emergency? I think you can anticipate my question.
The project's underway, and there was a shortfall of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. And Counselor, just so you know, I mean, unless I missed that email with respect to the councilors, not from a department head, not reading their emails or reading their agenda items, I may have missed that, but I would take exception to that as well on behalf of the entire council. So whatever...
I'll forward it to you.
Yeah, please do.
It was directed to the ordinance committee.
Whatever department head wanted to do that, I'd be happy to have a conversation with that individual outside of this chamber because I take exception to that because it's absolutely nonsense. Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Hearing none. Is there, the motion to adopt has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Counselor on seat one, Council President opposed. The ayes have it.
Item number six is a communication from the mayor and an order for the land acquisition of nine oh three Pierce Street.
Move to accept the communication and adopt the order.
Motion to adopt. Counselor, I'll entertain your motion to adopt, but I think this item is dealing with real estate and land acquisition. I would like to see this item referred to the Real Estate Committee, but you have a motion to adopt that has been made. Is there a second to the adoption?
Motion to refer to real estate?
Motion to refer to the Real Estate Committee has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President LaBeau. Discussion. Counselor on seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Is this a time-sensitive issue, Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. President?
Counselor on seat three?
Just point of order. If we're going to ask administrative people questions, they should be at the table.
Noted. Thank you. Motion has been made to refer to the Real Estate Committee, has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a request to revise some of the ordinances that relate to fire laws.
To refer to ordinance?
Second.
Motion to refer to ordinance and legislation has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President LaBeau. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The mayor's communication regarding gifts for the Fall River Opioid Task Force. The first is the amount of twenty-one hundred dollars from Fall River Police Officer Michael Pereira and Newton firefighter Michael Walsh and the Fall River Baptist Church.
Motion to accept.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion.
Can we just send letters to all the individuals for A and B?
Madam Clerk? Yep, noted. We'll send those letters. Motion has been made to adopt by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Council Vice President LaBeau. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the second would be the acceptance of fifty jackets from Officer Michael Pereira and Newton firefighter Michael Walsh.
Move to accept the order.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Stephen Camaro.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item nine is a communication from Corporation Council regarding the charter amendments by the Fall River Task Force.
To adopt, place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number ten is a communication from the Director of Financial Services regarding the quotes for the independent audit from three various proposals, with three various proposals.
Move to accept the communication, place on file. Second.
Would it be probably appropriate to adopt?
The council...
I've indicated a communication on here to...
Motion to accept and place on file and adopt Roselli, Clark, and Associates as the...
That would be correct. Roselli, Clark, and Associates. According to our CFO, when having discussions with her, it's the most advantageous in terms of pricing. And from our CFO, she's recommending that the council authorize the administration to execute a one-year engagement letter with an option for an additional two years. Just so the council knows, this is a new charter item requiring that the city council, through its council leadership, determine a independent audit firm for the auditing purposes. We've got three bids, three proposals before us today, and it's our suggestion, as Counselor Kadim indicated, Roselli, Clark, and Associates, as described in our communication letter from our CFO. Motion has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on July eighth, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained. These are handicapped parking ordinances.
Move adoption of the emergency preamble?
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Counselor Stephen Camaro, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Roll call. On the emergency preamble?
Yes. Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Camaro? Stephen Camaro?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alabie LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion to adopt. Would it be appropriate, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Motion to adopt through all readings. Would it be appropriate?
Motion to adopt all readings.
Motion to adopt all readings has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President LaBeau. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on July eighth, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained as amended. This ordinance relates to the zoning ordinances for kennel licenses.
Motion for emergency preamble?
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Roll call.
On adoption of the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Camaro? Stephen Camaro?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alabie LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion to pass through all readings as amended. Motion to pass through all readings as amended has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on July eighth, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to adopt first reading?
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Counselor Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on July eighth, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended. This is the salary ordinance that relates to the commission of recreational facilities.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended?
Second.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on July 8th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended. This is the salary ordinance for the parking clerk.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to pass through first... Motion to pass through first reading as amended?
Second.
Has been made by Consulor Long, seconded by Consulor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on July 8th voted three ayes, two nays to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended, with Consulor Alabie LaBeau and Vavarez voting in the negative. This is the marijuana facilities and licenses.
Madam Clerk, if my memory serves me correctly, if the notes could reflect or the minutes reflected of that meeting, weren't we waiting on a legal opinion from Corporation Council with respect to this? Maybe the Chair of the Ordinance Committee or somebody in the Ordinance Committee can indicate that. Were we waiting on some kind of a written opinion of sorts? Consul Kilby?
There were some discussions that we had at the meeting when Counsel... Judge Macy was here, and I had some private discussions with him as well, that, you know, he'd like that to be done. He'd like to, you know, to be able to do that, so...
So he would like to be able to prepare a written opinion?
Yes.
Okay. I'm abstaining from the vote, makes no difference to me. I just want the council to be well informed. Consul... Thank you, yield, Consulor?
Yes.
Consulor in seat five, Consul Vice President LaBeau?
The reason I voted no on this, and I'll vote no again tonight, is because at the meeting, this ordinance says the maximum number of marijuana licenses. But at the meeting, it was discussed that a host... any host agreement signed up to the number, which is now 11. If there was 11 host agreements signed, then that would be it. But that's not what this ordinance says. It says licenses, and in the case especially of marijuana, a host agreement does not equal a license, more often than not. They don't make it through all of the steps to get the license. So I feel like there needs to be some sort of clause in there that, you know, the person has... And we can... I think I asked the judge about this as well at the meeting, that, you know, they have a certain amount of time to act on obtaining that license, and then they, you know, they need to opt out, so we could issue another host agreement. But during the meeting, it was said the amount of host agreements, but that does not equal... that does not necessarily mean that they are, in fact, going to go through and get a license. Some people get host agreements from multiple cities and towns. I think they can get up to three, and then they decide where they might want to go. So we might have... The mayor, I believe, has given out with the administration 11 host agreements. This is just for recreational. However, if they decide to go elsewhere, that's it. Maybe two would open if they go through, and then we have nine host agreements sitting there that don't do anybody any good. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Consul in seat one, Consulor Kadim?
Thank you. So the ordinance was amended to read host... community host agreements on that. But I will say that we are not the issuing authority for the license. That comes from the state. In order to get the license, you have to have a community host agreement in place. So unless there is another suggestion on how we can limit or provide more community host agreements and guarantee that the number of host agreements out there will not exceed the number of licenses, then I'm all up for it. But in order to even apply for a license, you need to have a community host agreement. So this council has to make... And the city has to make an assumption that the number of host agreements that you issue to any entity is potentially the number of licenses that could potentially be issued by the state. So if you enter into 20 host... community host agreements, you could have technically 20 licenses if they're all approved by the state. The only way to limit that, which is, I think, the intent of Consulor in seat seven, is to put a cap on it. You should also put a cap on the community host agreements. And then, once those individuals pull out of applying for the license with the state, then we would... Could then go into another community host agreement. Outside of that, you know, if you enter into 15 or 20, there's a real potential that you could have that. And if we have an ordinance that's passed that says there's a cap of 11, I don't know what you'd do with the other four individuals who gets it. It's a first come, first served, or I think it just... You open yourself up to some type of legal ramifications.
Were these discussions had in the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation?
They were.
Okay.
I yield.
Thank you. Consul in seat three, Consul Kamara?
Mr. President, I'm not quite sure how I should approach my comments on this. I initially opposed even forwarding this to ordinance for consideration because I felt it was an effort to find a solution where there was no problem. There is no problem, from all indications, with allowing the market to prevail. Let the market decide how many businesses should open. I think that... I watched the entire Ordinance Committee meeting from home, and I felt as if it was just a hodgepodge of so many different arguments and different issues that were being raised that it was almost a comedic experience to try to figure out, you know, what it was that people were trying to do. However, I did...
Can I get a point of order on that, please?
Consulor in seat six, your point of order?
For another Consul to refer to a committee meeting as being comedic, we were very serious in that meeting, and I take offense to that type of language.
Thank you.
We work very hard in our committees, and I don't appreciate those types of comments, and I'm sick of them.
Thank you, Consul. If you can keep the...
Well, I appreciate the input, but, you know, I just...
It's a comment. It's a comment.
I'm just... My comment will stand.
I hear your comment.
Consul in seat three?
Is that your comment?
If we could get back to the item at hand, please. We don't need to...
So I'm just expressing my own personal opinion in watching...
Do that someone else.
Consul in seat three?
Do I have the floor, Mr. President?
Yes, you can continue, please.
Yeah, I would appreciate not being interrupted any further.
If you can, please.
So anyway, I'm just expressing my own point of view that I did feel that this particular issue, and it was not about the committee, it was about all the different parties that were present at the table, presenting their various points of view, which were dramatic. And I just thought that it was interesting. But again, I think it was an effort to find a solution where there is no problem. So what I... And then I heard on the radio, and I guess I'm going to ask the President to respond to this, I did hear the President say, because he was awaiting an opinion from the Corporation Council, and I think you were in the news hour stating this, that this wouldn't be brought up at this meeting, and if that's the case, then I would ask that we not continue discussion on this at this time until the President gets what he said he was expecting to get.
It was my understanding, and I'll let... Allow Consul in seat one to give the point of impression because I wasn't at the meeting, but it was my understanding that we were waiting on a written legal opinion from Corporation Council as a result of this meeting specifically, from a number of individuals who have reached out to me. I have not spoke to Corporation Council with respect to that.
That's my point of information.
Your point of information, Consul?
That's news to me, so I guess I'm trying to figure out if Corporation Council is anticipating drafting us some type of legal opinion. I didn't... I wasn't aware that we were getting a legal opinion.
Consul in seat seven, you have a point of information?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Macy tonight. He was at the meeting, and he hasn't done anything and didn't prepare anything. So it's... There's nothing coming from Mr. Macy.
Then I stand corrected. I was misinformed, so I apologize.
Okay. And accept that, Mr. President, because I heard that, there were people that I had anticipated might want to come and speak on this issue during citizen input time. But I said, based upon my hearing, the Council President say that this matter wasn't going to be acted upon at this time. I suggested this was not the meeting to attend to have this discussion. So I... Again, I think it's just adding to the confusion that surrounds this issue between the atmosphere that existed in the initial discussion to what was being talked about on radio, to the Council President's indication that this wouldn't be acted upon today. But if we're going to act on it today, I'm prepared to offer a motion to leave, to withdraw, because, again, I think that this item is an item that deserves a motion to leave, to withdraw. Let the market prevail. This is a revenue-producing operation for the city of Fall River. It is not causing any difficulty anywhere. It's actually putting Fall River in a good light in that we are creating... In fact, I drove by the old mill building on Weaver Street. I think all of us can see it as we traveled north or south on Route 79, with a new roof being put on the building, that total mill being totally reconstructed, as far as I know, totally private-funded, not seeking funds from the city or any TIF agreement or anything else. And I see revitalization. I see some financial investment in our city as a result of this. So, you know, there may be a time when it would be appropriate to address limits. Maybe down the road, if there was something that was resulting in a problem that needed a solution, then I think that that would be an appropriate time to address it. But at this point, I think, given this item leave, to withdraw, or if there's anticipation that there was going to be Corporation Council input into it because of an opinion, as was expressed on radio by the Council President, then I would say the appropriate thing would be to refer it back to Ordinance Committee and await for the legal opinion. So I'm not sure what... I'll not make either of those motions at this time because I don't want to stifle my colleagues from speaking as to how they feel about any of these issues. But I do think that appropriately, because of the information that's out there, and maybe it's misinformation that's out there, but this was not... This was not according to the information I received by listening to radio. This was not an item that we were going to be acting on today until we received the opinion from Corporation Council. Now, if that's mistaken, I think it's still worthy of tabling this or referring it back to Ordinance Committee or giving it leave, to withdraw, something that would give time for us to just consider the possibilities and to understand that this is not a problem and that we shouldn't be seeking a solution to something that is not a problem. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Consulor in seat six. Consul in seat seven, Consul Pelletier.
Thank you. First of all, I would argue with you, Mr. Kamara, there is a problem. There is a problem when you have more than eight, and there's a problem already on a state line with that company already. They had to hire more policemen to make sure they weren't using the right side of the street where people live, in the left side as well. And the problem is, they got one license, and they have an opportunity to put the other seven licenses out, and they should put about... Almost right away. So we know, the city knows where we stand. And the reason why I'll support going to 11 is because the mayor has signed 11 letters. And that creates a problem, too. If they go out and spend money, either get in the building, buy a building, get a lawyer, get in all the paperwork, and it's because the mayor signed the letter of non-opposition. So I think that reflects on us as well. And to have more than eight? No. If I got to go to 11, so be it. Now they're scuttled, but that they want marijuana cafes. Does that come in the Fall River as well? Marijuana cafes? Why not? We'll have 11 of these? We start putting marijuana cafes in the city of Fall River? There's no way. So, you know, I think this is a start, and if we go to 11, so be it. If we need more, then we can bring it back, review it. But... And then you talk about the money. A lot of money's been coming in. I don't care. The money's still going to come in because they got to pay that 3%. Got to pay the 3%. And if we tell the CCC that through ordinance, city of Fall River decided we're going to do 11, you don't think Boston's going to say, hey, Fall River, you only want 11? I don't think so. We're going to give you three more or five more. Then it works. We put an ordinance, that's what we want, and they can say, yeah, they want 11, we'll give them 11, so be it. You may not even get 11. If you got eight people doing business in the city of Fall River, and you got somebody who wants to come in, you say, oh, boy, I don't know, they're all doing pretty good. Can we put another one in? Is it worth it? Is it worth to spend $2, $3 million going into the cities that's eight, nine, 10, or 11 places? I don't think so. I don't know. You know, Rhode Island didn't adopt anything. Connecticut, the same thing. They're waiting to see what happens in the state of Massachusetts and see what's going on. I don't believe the city needs more than eight. I'm willing to go with 11. Let's work on that. And I'm definitely against any marijuana cafes here in the city of Fall River. We've got enough problems with that. With that, I yield for now.
Consulor in seat six, Consul Long?
Well, just to bring you up on the... The meeting was held, and I thought it was a good meeting. The questions that came up that were involving Corporation Council was whether we had the authority to overrule executive authority in issuing the letters of non-opposition or even host agreements. So we decided that we use the term licenses to try and limit it at that point. We did move to 11 because there's 11 host agreements that are out there at this point. But in my opinion, they can... They could issue 80 host agreements. It wouldn't matter to me. If this was in place, the first 11 licenses issued would be the licenses issued, and after that, those host agreements would be basically moot at that point because there's no licenses available. So I thought it was a very good meeting. I think we talked about a lot of the issues, and I'm willing to support this at 11. And if we want to change it, we can still go back and change it. But at this point, it's like, let's slow it down a little bit. Let's see what pans out and look at it again in the future. It'll be fine with me. And then just to make a... You know, my learned colleague in seat three gets his information from the radio and recommends what people should do by the information he has on the radio. I said, that's pretty interesting, the way you do your research for these comedic meetings that you say happen, but...
Mr. President?
No, 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 no. I got the floor.
Point of order, Mr. President.
I got the floor. Don't I have the floor?
Consul in seat eight, your point of order, real quick.
Yeah, point of order. The Consul is directing direct comments to me, and you're not controlling that. You asked me not to have direct comments.
He's defending his meeting.
Start speaking for consistency.
Consulor in seat six, Consul Long?
I'm all set. I yield.
Thank you. Consulor in seat four, Consul Kilby?
Yes, sir. I'll just quickly add in support of my colleague, Chairman of the Ordinances Committee. It was an excellent meeting, very productive, very poignant questions, very good answers from our Corporation Council. I learned a great deal from the meeting, and I'm in support of capping at 11 at this point. I mean, as I said at the meeting, voting on an ordinance, that ordinance is not edged in stone. I mean, I even heard from a local talk show host, who has an interest, obviously, in this, stating that it's tying the arms of future counselors. It's not true. Since the meeting, I've talked to a lot of prominent business people in the city. I've talked to the general public, and the far majority of people I spoke with said it makes sense at this time to put a cap. It could be a temporary cap, as I said, at 11. So I think it makes sense. Plus, it came out in the meeting, obviously, I think Sean Kadim brought it up, that we have no zoning in place in the city of Fall River to, you know, to restrict where the recreational facilities can operate. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the only restriction is 500 feet from a school. I remember, well, I mean, laws are still in place. If an individual is caught selling marijuana or other drugs on a black market within a thousand feet of school, it's mandatory prison time. So there's no zoning in place at this point in time. It's not a confusing issue. I think there's some people in the community, and maybe my colleague to my right, who's making it a little bit more confusing because it's not. The ordinance can be, as I said, could be looked at again, but I think we do need to take a step back at this point in time and put a cap, aside from repeating, even if it's a temporary cap at 11. And I think Sean Kadim's motion at that past ordinance makes total sense with regard to... And he can recite, you know, his motion, you know, more particularly for the rest of the council. But it's in line with state law, 20% of the number of liquor licenses. He can recite on his own. But it does make total sense to me. So in support of the Chairman of the Ordinance Committee, it was a very, very good meeting. For instance, it came to light something I didn't know, forgive me, but we have no authority over medical licenses. We can't restrict medical licenses. So it's being bantered about, again, on the radio, that the city council is doing injustice for this elderly couple that lives in Pawtucket, who can't get medical marijuana because the city of Fall River put a restriction. That's not true. We can't touch medical marijuana. So this strictly applies to recreational, and that's all we're doing here. And if it sends a message to the CCC that at this point in time, that that's all we're interested in, then I think it's the right thing to do until we have proper safeguards in place to protect our neighborhoods. I'm not saying that this brings about crime, but if the only restriction is within 500 feet from a school, I don't think that's good enough. I know, you know, many people in the city wouldn't want, you know, a facility across the street from their home, and, you know, that's really off the scene. So I'm prepared to support it tonight, and I yield.
Thank you. Consul in seat five, Consul Vice President LaBeau?
Thank you. I'm concerned about Consulor in seat three's comments because while what he considers a hodgepodge or comedic atmosphere is, those were genuine thoughtful questions, and I disagree with the colleague to my right. It is a big issue. It does have different parts to it. There was confusion on a medical or recreational host agreement versus license versus letter of non-opposition, all separate things, depending on which type of marijuana facility we were speaking about. Madam Clerk, could you read the amendment, please?
So the amended ordinance would be that the maximum number of marijuana licenses available at any one time in the city of Fall River will be limited to 20% of off-premise liquor licenses or 11, whichever number is greater.
Okay, so to Consulor in seat one, it was amended, but it was amended just the number. It wasn't amended to a host agreement versus license. And I agree with Consulor in seat one. We, on our side, if we sign a host agreement, that means, you know, we're signing a contract that they can come and open. But on the other side, in this particular industry, it doesn't necessarily mean that. They are not beholden to it. And he had mentioned something about if they cancel their process with the state, I don't think that they have to do anything to formally cancel their process with the state. If they're going to go somewhere else, I think it's just left to linger. So I would like to see some kind of wording in there, um, that, some kind of clause in there that they have a certain amount of time. I mean, if, if two people out of the current eleven letters go forward and then no one else continues the process, we're stuck at two. We can't do anything else because we've given out eleven host agreements. We have no way of, you know, as Counselor in seat one said, you know, we signed on our side so that we're contracted for that, but we don't have anything on their side that says, you know what, no, we're not going to go through with this, rather than, other than us calling to follow up, are you going to go through this, where you at, um, to possibly give out another one? So that was, was the clause I was looking for at the ordinance meeting and, and looking for, again, I don't know if, if Corporation Council has any insight on that or could provide any insight on that. I'm fine with tabling it or sending it back to ordinance until we get that. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you. So I think part of the problem is, is that people take the facts that are at hand and try to confuse everybody so that you get a hodgepodge of debates going on, if you, if you will. So just to clarify, this is, uh, first reading as amended, so there are, uh, other opportunities for individuals that want to come down and speak on this issue to come to the next council meeting and still be able to do that. Um, in terms of confusion and the comedy, I missed, I missed the comedy because I, I must have, the joke went over my head. I, I'm not quite sure what was, what was funny or what the punchline was, but, um, in terms of no issues, the problem is, is that I asked the question point blank of the administration before we even had, when we get into the conversation. When we're going back and forth about the debate as to whether or not eleven licenses were too little or was it too much? If there were no issues, what was it? If there was any analysis that was done, we were told at the committee meeting that there was no analysis that was done by the administration. So if there's no analysis done by the administration to tell us what the impact of, on the number of licenses that are going to be issued, how do we know that there are no issues? There was no analysis given, given, given thought to this. The other piece in terms of zoning, the city of Fall River missed the boat with regards to creating an overlay district. You go to any other community, there are overlay districts, marijuana overlay districts, setting aside portions of, uh, municipality as to where these businesses can relocate, or, or can locate, I should say. Uh, we currently are open for business throughout the entire city. As long as you're in a local, uh, business district, you're, you're fine, you're in, in not operating in a residential. So the only real restrictions are the limited restrictions that are put on the regulations. When we talk about no issues, we don't know if there are going to be no issues because we only have a number of licensed, uh, uh, four companies that are open, that are operational right now. Uh, we don't know what the impact is truly going to be until we start to see this. So in terms of, from my standpoint, my, my point of view, if we cap, if we put a cap on the, on the number of licenses, we can revisit it as these, uh, companies come in and start operating in, in, in the city of Fall River and really truly see what the impact is to the community in terms of police, fire, public safety. Again, this law was adopted, it was adopted with regulations and part of the regulations allows for a community to put a cap on the number of licenses that are, are going to be issued by a community. I don't see anybody kicking or screaming with regard to the number of licenses that we have, which is a cap for, uh, off-premise liquor licenses. It's a very similar concept. I, I think it's within our jurisdiction and should be within our due diligence to make sure that we're looking at all the implications and the growth of the community, uh, in terms of this new, um, business, if you will, or the, the market sector that we're, we're going to be going into. Um, and I'll also talk about the, the no issues and I, I think something that we all know, uh, but we completely ignore is the money that's been giving, uh, that's being given to the administration by these marijuana companies for these licenses and the kickback monies, um, that he is receiving in order to issue these licenses is an issue. And I think the only way for us to stop that is to put a cap on the number of licenses, uh, that we have. And it's an unfortunate situation, but that's the reality of the situation. Uh, we can continue to turn a blind eye, um, but sooner than later, we'll start to see some additional charges come down of, of individuals receiving monies, uh, for these licenses. And, and then we'll all be sitting here saying that we should have put a cap on it, trying to eliminate, or eliminate that, that exposure. So to say that there's no issues is, is an absolute lie at this point or, and is misleading the public. I think what we're, we're doing is trying to vet a situation, do our due diligence, make sure that we're looking at the long-term strategic planning of the city, um, and to see how many licenses work. Now, if eleven is, is not enough and the market says that, uh, we should have more than the, the city council, whatever that makeup is of that, of the body at that time, uh, can have a ordinance meeting and change and lift that cap or remove the cap completely. But without having all this information at hand, um, I, I think a cap makes the most sense so that we can do our due diligence. At that point, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Council Vice President LaBeau.
I take back my, uh, comment about, um, tabling it. This is first reading, so it's going to go back to ordinance anyway and I can, um, speak to the judge about the issue, but I would agree with Counselor in seat one. The only way I would support this in its current form is, um, just to know that the kickbacks would stop, go to the sixth floor. That I yield.
Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Well, we're adding, we're adding another element to this that I would need some, some understanding of, kickbacks. Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure what that is, is referencing. Is it, is it the, is it the amount of money the city of Fall River receives from, uh, the fifty thousand dollars per, uh, per, um, application or per, um, license that the city's receiving? That, to me, is revenue that is assisting
Point of information.
taxpayers and rent payers.
Your point of information.
Can I clarify, because I think everybody at this council knows exactly what I'm talking about when I say kickbacks. It's illegal money that gets exchanged in terms for a community host agreement being signed. That's, that's, we all know that's happening, right? So if we want to ignore that, then we can continue to ignore that, but we'll, we'll see that coming down pretty soon.
Counselor in seat three.
Well, it's all of these pretty soon and I think that my colleague who's absent today in seat two talked about Rumaville. So if there's Rumaville, uh, that we're going to be basing our information on, uh, then so be it. It's not anything that I'm familiar with or I'm aware of, but, uh, that, that's just me. Um, and as far as research that I do, uh, I, it's clear to me that the, that the research that's being done is research that I don't think is, is debatable, that Fall River taxpayers and rent payers have gained because of this industry coming to Fall River. The amount of money that the, that the tax coffers have, have been receiving from this industry has, has resulted in, in lesser increases than what would occur, uh, had that money not come into the city. So this is, this is the greatest new revenue source that the city of Fall River has received in decades. And I can't remember a time in my service where there has been such an opportunity to gain revenue for our city coffers, to provide some support to renters and taxpayers, for, for a legal industry that has chosen to come to Fall River and could very positively change the atmosphere in Fall River to be, be a friendly and welcoming community. We've, we've turned down historically industries that were, uh, important industries, the automobile industry back long ago, uh, the energy industry that Somerset got because Fall River didn't want it. We got the pollution from it, but we didn't get the tax benefit from it. And here we have an opportunity now to, to embrace an industry that's a clean industry that is producing revenue for the city and is providing a, a product that the people want. So let the people choose, is what I say. And as far as continuing on research, if I hear the council president on radio state something, that's a primary source of information. That's not, it's not hearsay. I'm not getting a secondhand source of information. It's not reading something that somebody wrote as an opinion. It's direct information that I heard with my ears from our chief, our chief, our leader, our president, saying that this item wasn't going to be acted on tonight. Uh, and I think that is why we don't see the citizen input on this issue tonight that was expected. It was stated on radio by the council president that this wasn't going to be talked about tonight and that, uh, it was going to, it was awaiting an opinion from the, uh, from the Corporation Council. I based my information on that information. I didn't have to call him and say, "Is that what you said?" Because I know that's what he said. He confirmed it tonight that that's what he said. So I told people, "No, tonight is not the meeting to come to, to discuss this item because we're not going to act on it until the Corporation Council renders its opinion." That is based upon information I received from the council president. So we do not have input from the public on this item tonight, largely because it was stated by our council president that this item wouldn't be discussed tonight. And secondly, uh, personally, I told people that we're planning to come tonight, that tonight was not the night for us to act on this matter. So, you know, we can change the rules in the middle of the game. I, I think there's also been some information, I, I think, and with all due respect to my beloved colleague in seat four, saying that, "Do you want this across the street from where you live?" Well, there is zoning in place. This is not an industry of business that's allowed to go in residential neighborhoods, as my colleague in seat one aptly stated. This can go into a business district, but it cannot go into a residential district. So to put out some fear information out there that somehow a marijuana distribution center is going to be put across the street from your residential home, that's not the case. There's, there's, that's more misinformation, adding to the hodgepodge of misinformation that I feel is out there around this issue. So, you know, I'm, I'm opposing it, you know, in all its forms. I wasn't in favor of it going forward at all. I think it's, I think it's a missed opportunity for us to put a, put a lid on, on this industry. We don't put lids on, on, uh, on industries in the community that are producing revenue that is, that's safe and, and healthy and, and, and beneficial, not only to those who are purchasing, but particularly to our city coffers. I am about revenue coming into our city so that it can be a relief to our beleaguered and overburdened taxpayers and rent payers. This industry is providing us with a relief and it's a relief that we should be embracing and celebrating and supporting. And if there are cafes that might come down the road, that might complement the breweries that are opening, uh, such as Troy City Brewing or, uh, uh, Canned Heat, uh, that's just recently opened, uh, that's where, that's where the young people are gathering. They're spending their money in Fall River and, 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 and that's a good thing. It benefits all our business community as well. So I, I think we're being very short-sighted, we're being very naive and we're being very, um, backward in, in not allowing this industry to prevail. laissez-faire was a word, French word, learned early in my life, meaning let the, let the business community prevail. Let them decide what can survive and what cannot survive. If the, if only five industries, only five, uh, distribution centers are going to solve, uh, serve the, uh, the marketing of, of, of this commodity, then five industries will open, five businesses will open. If ten businesses are going to be needed in order to, to satisfy the, the need, then ten businesses will, will be open. But let the business community decide, let the market decide and let Fall River benefit financially from this effort, not about kickbacks. And, you know, that's something that somebody else may know about, that I don't know about. But I do know that the city of Fall River is benefiting to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. In fact, it was, the, the local newspaper had in its main article, fifty, fifty thousand dollars per, per business, uh, and then in their headline, they put five thousand dollars per business, uh, which was, again, confusing. It's fifty thousand dollars per business that comes in, is it, I believe annually. Mrs. Viveras can, can verify that. But fifty thousand dollars annually, if there are ten, ten, that's five hundred thousand dollars annually, uh, coming from, from these, these businesses. Why would you turn your back on that kind of influx of income into our city coffers, which again provides some relief to our taxpayers and to our rent payers? For an industry that is legal, for a commodity that's legal, for an industry that's clean, that it's, 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 you know, I've been to, I've been to quite a few bars in Fall River in my lifetime and some of them are pretty seedy, uh, I will say, and some of them are wonderful, excellent places. They're all different types, but that is not the case with this industry. This is a clean industry. There's, there's no violence that occurs in these places. There's no domestic arguments that occurs. It's, it's a good industry for Fall River to benefit from. Let the market, let, let the market prevail. I yield.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, was there discussion, if you recall, at the ordinance committee meeting with respect to a legal opinion with respect to marijuana?
There was a resolution that requested input from Corporation Council.
Okay, separate from this...
Which is still pending and committed.
Okay, so there was discussion with respect to getting some kind of a legal opinion with respect to marijuana.
I don't know that it was...
Maybe somebody's waiting for information.
But it was...
Yeah. And with respect, and with respect to my radio interview, every single city counselor here, um, has had an interview on a local radio station throughout their long careers as city councilors. And you all know that sometimes you get a phone call at eight o'clock in the morning or nine o'clock in the morning asking if you can pre-record your newsroom at nine o'clock in the morning. The city council received this agenda Thursday afternoon, one o'clock in the afternoon. My, my radio interview was at nine o'clock in the morning. So this entire Fall River city council, including colleague in seat three, had until, uh, from Thursday at one o'clock in the afternoon to today, Tuesday, at six o'clock to contact me if he was, if, if you were concerned with respect to my comments on the radio. In addition to that, if you read your agenda, which was available to you at one o'clock in the afternoon on Thursday, uh, the eleventh of July, you would be able to tell your individuals that they can come to this council meeting and voice their concerns. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Long, followed by Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kilby.
So much, again, confusing, because we make it confusing. Um, it, this is really, really simple to me. We have embraced this, this industry. We've issued eleven, uh, not, not, uh, but
Non-opposition.
non-opposition letters. We've issued eleven host agreements. Okay? This is about limiting the license. This is not saying that we are going to be against them in any way. You got, I, I find it hard to believe that we'll even have eleven licenses in the city of Fall River. I just find it hard to believe. So I think we're well within a, a reasonable range. If in the next two months, next six months, all eleven licenses get granted, then maybe we should take a second look and say, "Hey, wait a minute, maybe we need to do more." But I find it very, very hard to believe. And if you talk to some of the people involved, what happens with these companies is the first thing they do is they say, "Let's go out to as many communities as possible and get these host agreements so that we can get in line." Then they get in line and they say, "Okay, where's the best place for me to locate?" Well, if a guy's looking at something coming to Fall River that already has four, five, six, eight licenses in play, all go to a community that has zero, where do you think they're going to go? They're going to go where there's zero because there will be no competition. So all I, I think this eleven makes sense. I don't think we're breaking any host agreement or breaking any, uh, non-opposition agreements. That has nothing to do with it. What we're saying is we're going to limit the licenses to eleven. Once we reach eleven, it's over. You may have a host agreement, you may have everything else, but too bad you're out of luck because there's no more licenses available. So I don't see an issue with this, and again, it's in first reading. We can have many people come down, discuss it, whatever they want to do, but I say, "Let's pull the reins in a little bit for a host of reasons, some of which have come up here tonight, and just say, 'Let's take a closer look and slow this down just a little bit.'" And I think that's the right thing to do and I'm supporting it at eleven. It's simple, it's easy, and, and we can make it as confusing as you want it to be, but this is recreational marijuana, period. This is about, the executive branch has the authority to issue the, uh, the letters of non-opposition and the host agreements. We can't touch those, uh, but we can limit the licenses. That's what this is trying to do, that's what this is supposed to do, and that's what I'm supporting. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kilby.
Yeah, just one final comment on my part with regard to this. Also, what came up in the meeting, and again, I'm going to reference Sean Kadeem, he's much more schooled, I think, than any of us on this. New Bedford, Somerset, Seekonk, Swansea, they haven't issued any letters of non-opposition. Is that correct? True, the chair?
Counselor in seat one.
Um, New Bedford's going through it now. Somerset has their, uh, facility is about to open up shortly. Uh, Seekonk has not issued anything, um, to this point. Swansea, I'm not sure.
To, uh, Counselor Long's point, I mean, we have embraced this new potential source of revenue. So I'm not going to repeat his comments. I couldn't agree with Counselor Long more. And secondly, in terms of the, the zoning, uh, comment made by Counselor in seat three, I suggest you go to the planning department tomorrow and take a look at the zoning map. So I'm not talking about LaBarren Street or Langley Street or Ray Street. I'm talking about, the, the zoning in Fall River is extremely complex. It's overlapping with businesses, with residences, with nursing homes, hospitals, schools. It is a very, very, so the potential of this intruding on a, in a residential neighborhood, it's, it's viable, it's, it's possible. So it's, it's, it's a consideration that is worth looking at as well. So I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you. To Counselor in seat four's point, I mean, all you have to do is go to the, uh, south end of Fall River going into the Tivana Line. That facility there is, uh, you, in order to get into the residential neighborhood, you have to drive by, drive past the, uh, facility. I mean, it's, it's essentially the, the entryway to the subdivision. So, uh, I mean, it is well taken. I mean, your, your local businesses do overlap, especially in the south end to residential neighborhoods. Um, I, I do have, again, I, I want to clarify, the ban that we're putting on is just solely for recreational purposes, right? So anybody who had, receives a letter of non-opposition from the mayor's office can open up a medical dispensary. And those, those numbers, the number of, uh, the number of, uh, non-opposition letters that are, that are issued has no cap. So any, the administration can issue as many as they want specifically for the medical marijuana. The regulations as set forth by the state limit the, or put, put a cap on the recreational piece. So, um, that's what we're looking at, that's what we're talking about, but that doesn't stop somebody who has a medical need, uh, to get their medical marijuana if, uh, companies decide to open up. I do have a question, uh, from my Counselor in seat three with regards to the additional revenue that's received and the tax relief that's, that's being, um, seen by the, the taxpayers. Last I checked, as taxes went up to the two and a half limit, which is, uh, the max allowed by law without a, a prop two and a half override. Uh, water rates went up, our sewer rates went up, so I'm missing where the tax relief is.
Counselor in seat three.
It's, it's a very new industry. It's a very new industry and the impact of the finances of that industry are just beginning. Uh, I, I think the city has, has gained very few dollars compared to the amount of dollars that it will be receiving as the industry grows. So give it an opportunity and you'll see the hundreds of thousands of dollars that will come to the city tax coffers as a result of this industry.
Okay, so that there hasn't been any tax relief.
There has been some.
There hasn't been any, we just went...
We can call the city administrator down
We can.
Back to the table, if you want to get an exact answer.
Motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules, sir. Invite city administration down has been made by Councillor Kadim, seconded by?
Second.
Councillor Stephen Kamara. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? The, Councillor in seat six, opposed. The ayes have it.
So my question would be to Ms. Hadi, the chief financial officer. In the history of Fall River, have we ever done a prop two and a half override?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of, okay.
With the exception of the high school.
Right, but that's a dead exclusion.
Right.
So outside of that, on the FY '20 budget, did we go to the max level?
We did.
So we went to the two and a half percent allowed by law?
That's correct.
So there was no tax relief?
We went to the two and a half by law. That's correct.
So there's no tax relief?
Local receipts did not give us a tax relief, that's correct.
Okay. The fifty thousand dollars that's being issued for each company, that's limited for five years, because it's per the host agreement, you can't exceed the fifty thousand dollars per year after the fifth year. You can only go into the actual sales revenue, is that accurate?
I'd have to check. I think the, I think we made our agreements reviewable every three years.
Yep.
Just for that reason.
So, but the, for impact fees, you can only go five years? So you can do it three years?
That's right.
Go into the five years. After the fifth year, you can't collect on that? You can only get the sales?
No, I think you can, I think it's reviewable.
Right.
I know it's reviewable, but you have to show a significant impact on the community in order to receive that, so.
All I can tell you about the five years out is, if you look back three years, we're not where we expected to be today, three years ago.
No, I get that, but there's a limit, right? But based on the regulation, there is a limit as to what you can collect on that, as opposed to the revenue tax. The revenue tax is for the entire time of the company's in place, right? So I want to just clarify that, because we see fifty thousand dollars every year, year over year, over year, and the regulation states that, per the host agreement, it can't exceed fifty, five years, and at that point, to your point, you have to review and then enter into a new host agreement, at which point you would.
My point being, under our agreements, after three years, we could increase the fifty.
You could, but at year five, per the regulation, that revenue potentially could cease, could stop.
I think that's right, unless they change.
Right. So I just want to clarify that. So there really is no real tax relief that we've seen, because we went to the two and a half percent for the property tax. We increased the sewer, we increased the water rates.
That's correct.
And the fifty thousand dollars, by the regulation, as set by the Department of Health and the state, is five years, and then to be revisited with no guarantee.
The revenue percentages.
The three percent, the three percent revenue, year over year, yes. So I just want to clarify those couple of points for those people at home that really want to get the real information. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Councillor in seat three, Councillor Kamara.
So if we could, city administrator and COO, the revenue received from the marijuana industry in fiscal year nineteen, 2019, the year that just ended, how much revenue was received in 2019?
To date, we have received fifty thousand dollars times three, so we have three that are open and had licenses as of December 31.
In FY '19, madam?
In FY '19, that's correct. In addition, we have one recreational unit that's open, and that particular recreational unit paid us through May's receipts of, I believe it was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I can confirm that, but it was approximately that. The June cash receipt has not been received yet, I'm expecting it to be approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So we will be at about four and a quarter, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for recreational, and for medical, our total cash receipts to date are approximately thirty thousand dollars. And that's for fiscal 19.
So that's for fiscal 19. So we've received approximately six hundred thousand dollars, my quick calculation, the hundred and fifty thousand, the three hundred and thirty thousand, the hundred thousand, and then the additional thirty thousand, right? Comes to about six hundred thousand, right? So that's not chump change. So that's 2019. So what do we, are projecting for 2020?
For the 2020 budget, I can pull it out, I have it here with me, but I believe, if my memory serves me correct, the hundred and fifty thousand for the three that have licenses, we didn't over-project, there may be others with licenses, as this council has discussed prior to this coming December, but we projected the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and for the recreational, we have projected a sum total of one point eight million dollars.
So the full amount is one point eight?
One point eight.
Okay.
And the medical is negligible at this particular point.
Okay, so one point eight, so in 2019, now I know, I know a little bit about forecasting, so if you get six hundred thousand dollars in 2019, and then it triples the next year, and goes to one point eight million, that's a pretty good jump. I don't know how many people put money in the bank, but if you get a three hundred percent increase in your investment, then I think you're going to be pretty happy. I don't think anybody's been lately getting that kind of return on their investments.
Well, councillor, recreational was in effect since January, so the six hundred thousand dollars, or the four hundred realistically, was for approximately six months.
Okay. But the point is that we're going from six hundred thousand in 2019, to triple that, to one point eight million in 2020, I think there's a pretty good, I don't know if you've done any projections into 2021, but if the projections continue, and we triple again that one point eight times three, we're going to get five point four million. That would just be, without increases in new licenses, that would be just the projectile, if you will, of the six hundred thousand received last year, the one point eight that we anticipate receiving this year, and if that projection continues, that would be five point four. Now, we can continue on to 2022, where we would be at somewhere like sixteen million. That's all pretty good cash, when you're a city looking to survive on something other than the renters and property taxpayers paying their water, sewer, and property tax bills. So, you know, I think that, and I appreciate your coming down, I know that this is all a very questionable science, because we don't know where this industry is going, but we do see the fruits of this industry benefiting our city, to a smaller extent of six hundred thousand dollars in 2019, to a larger extent of one point eight million in 2020, and likely, if that projectile continues, to something that's going to be approaching six million in 2020, 21. I have been looking for a revenue source for this city that doesn't disrupt, I know I was one that didn't like the electronic billboards, and, you know, I stand by that, but this is money, that's money in the bank for our city, and all we have to do is let the market prevail. Let the market decide, let the people decide whether they want to invest their funds and their money in this industry. Because we're talking about just the money from the industry. What about the money of, when I drive by the mill building on Weaver Street, and I see roofers on that roof, or I see new windows being put in that, those are window installers, and those are roofers that are getting good salaries to restore that building, again, with no TIF, no public input, they're doing it all with private money. And that's what this industry is so beautiful about, this industry right now, is that all of this money is coming private money. They're not doing it with tax breaks, they're not doing it with the influx of TIF agreements, they're not looking for community preservation money, they're all doing this out of their own pockets. It's a deep-pocket industry that's benefiting our community and making Fall River a hip place to be. And I think that hipster place to be, I was in Austin, Texas, not too long ago, and they pride themselves on being weird. They say, Austin is weird, come to Austin, and Austin is one of the probably top five cities in America that young people are coming to. Let people come to Fall River, open our doors, let's celebrate this change in our community, and stop this head-in-the-sand attitude that somehow, you know, that, and I understand the, you know, the issues around marijuana, that some people think is, you know, something that's religiously something, you know, it's unfortunate, you know, all of these things that come along. But this is an industry.
Councillor in seat six, your point of order.
Yeah, I thought this was a discussion about.
I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I thought this was a discussion about whether there was tax relief based on the payments from these industries, and I think it's clear, the answer is, at this point, no.
Well said. Councillor in seat one, Councillor Kadim.
Thank you. First of all, I could care less if somebody wants to smoke marijuana or not. I choose not to, but that doesn't cloud my judgment, no pun intended, as to whether or not I want to have eleven licenses, twenty licenses. Councillor in seat three's logic is a little flawed, in the sense that we're forgetting Economics 101, right? Supply and demand. Right now, the supply is limited, okay? So the demand, once the demand is out there, then we're going to have more supply, once the supply is just going to get spread out. It's going to get spread out to other communities. So starting to rely on all these revenues, which is going to get diluted to other communities, is going to be, have a negative impact in a city like Fall River that is fifty percent reliant on local aid, right? There is no tax relief, and for anybody to try to confuse the issue, or make people believe that there is tax relief, there is no tax relief. Your strategic forecasting going out, are you not going to the levy limit at any point in the next five years?
I'm no councillor, we are going to the limit, the levy limit.
Okay. Are we not seeing any increases in water and sewer over the next five years?
Mr. Sullivan normally does his own projections, but I would assume there would be increases.
So there's not going to be any tax relief. What we're going to have is a reliance on some revenue that could be diluted to other communities, which then would also impact our operating budget year over year. So that's the argument that I would make.
I think, councillor, at this particular point, it's too early to tell, but you are correct, supply and demand will make a difference. The more recreational facilities that are open, the possibility exists that the revenue will be split among those particular facilities, as opposed to increasing. In addition, depending on Economics 101, the cost of the product may have to decrease, because there will be more supply and more individuals selling it, and so there'll be more competition.
Right, and then your sales.
And a lot of that can't be projected at this particular point.
And your sales numbers are going to go down. So I just want to make two things clear. There is no tax relief in the near future, which, based on strategic planning by the finance department, and there is a supply and demands or economic impact on this whole situation, that we don't know, quite frankly, how it's going to play out. So whether we have eleven companies, or we have twenty-five companies, we're still going to see the same amount of revenue coming into the city. From our standpoint, it makes more sense to have eleven companies, so that we can understand what the quality of life impact is going to be, right? And at that point, we can make a decision if we want to be known as the weird community like Austin, and try to get all the weirdos to come over, and I don't even know what that definition is, or what drives, you know, a community being weird, but if that's what we want to do, then let's have a conversation, let's have some strategic planning, and have a marketing plan to market us as a weird community. With that, I yield.
I would like to interject, though, councillor, I think we're overlooking one important point. And again, however the council chooses to act, it's clearly your purview, but the reality is that the reason that we were able to provide you with a balanced budget this year, that did not include any of the revenues from the infamous purple bags, was because of the new revenue source coming from the cannabis. Now, the fact that people do not have to buy purple bags, you could, I think you have to legitimately recognize, is a savings.
But the problem, but the problem with that is, is that.
To your point, if I could.
Yeah, but the problem with that is, the cost for throwing out for trash continues to exponentially increase. So we had a two million dollar increase in our operating budget alone, so the marijuana might be offsetting it. But when the marijuana sales go away, we're back in the same boat that we're in now.
No, councillor.
We've thrown away revenue.
I disagree, because, again, we've been very conservative in our estimates. You're absolutely right about supply and demand, none of the, any of us would take issue to that. But what I'm suggesting to you is, there will be, for the foreseeable future, a revenue source from the cannabis sales. I think the one point eight, I don't know how much more it's going to grow, I mean, we don't know what that trajectory is going to be, but I question whether it's going to go below that one point eight. I think what we're seeing is a reasonable number. And all I'm suggesting is, we talked about savings and benefits to the consumer, and what I'm suggesting is that the elimination of the purple bags could not have happened without the cannabis sales, and that was, in fact, an expense reduction to the average resident within the city of Fall River. So we're not, we're not looking ahead to say that we're going to be able to not raise taxes, or we're not going to be able to do other things, but what I'm saying is, that revenue did have a positive impact on the costs that people had to incur for their municipal services. And I don't think we can discount that.
So what happened was, you eliminated the purple bags without the marijuana revenue coming in. The marijuana revenue came in, it saved the budget, right? It helped to supplant what the issue was, so you did it without the marijuana companies. You were getting rid of the purple bags regardless of what was happening, with no care whatsoever on the impact on the financial.
Well, that's not true, councillor.
It's absolutely true.
No, it absolutely is not. We would not have taken an action if we couldn't have maintained a balanced budget, which we did.
You didn't even know that was going to take place, you already eliminated.
We knew.
Before you even submitted any type of financial forecasting to the city council.
Councillor, we knew the cannabis sales revenues were coming in.
We're not getting anywhere here, but.
Maybe my colleagues will believe that, but I certainly won't. With that, I mean, we've been back and forth on this, so, I mean, at the end of the day, we're going to have limited revenue, whether it's eleven companies or twenty companies, and I'll ask the administration again, if you can tell us what you feel is comfortable for a license, based on the analysis that you've done, share it with us. I asked for it at the ordinance meeting, I didn't get it. With that, you know, I'm prepared to support the motion that, and the amendment that came out of ordinance committee.
Attorney Macy.
I don't think this is particularly important to anybody but me, but I just, I just want to make the record clear, I was not asked for an opinion prior to this meeting. Had I been asked formally for a written opinion, I would have provided it. Frankly, I didn't even know that, because I don't listen to the radio, but I don't, I didn't know until the council appellate here at the real estate committee asked me if I had prepared anything. If there's something the council needs, I'd be, I would prepare it, but I just, as I say, I don't think it matters to anybody but me, but I was not asked for an opinion.
Fair enough. Anything further from the council? Councillor in seat five, Councillor Vice President LaBeau.
I was just trying to grab my budget. What was the amount of money that we took in for medical marijuana revenue in the budget? I'm sorry, any marijuana?
In what fiscal year?
This year. Twenty twenty.
In 2020?
Yep.
Nineteen. Nineteen? What, have we taken in, or what are we budgeting?
No. What did you budget in 2020?
One point eight million.
You budgeted one point?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
Plus the hundred and fifty thousand for the impact fee.
Judge, I know we talked about this at the ordinance meeting, but there are different licenses, correct? Recreational, medical, and also a cultivation license? And some facilities will be doing all three, some will just be doing medical, and some will just be doing recreational?
I think so. Most of them have asked for, at least two of the three. Some people have asked for cultivation as well, some people have not.
So I think that's a point too, and we had talked about this, is the cultivation and medical also, actually, I'm sorry, no, not medical, because that's all on its own, is the cultivation included in this eleven, a license to cultivate?
Well, I think if and when this passes, we'll have to decide what the license refers to. I think that the medical licenses, which don't have a cap, are probably are not included, but they might be. I think that, because we're going to stay the flux with the CCC, I'm not prepared to give a definitive opinion tonight, but, I mean, anybody can count, eleven's eleven.
For our next ordinance committee meeting, I feel that there's a section of wording missing from this ordinance. There's too many holes in this ordinance, this, you know, host agreement versus license versus, you know, we have three different things here. I would be looking to fill those holes, fill those gaps in with more information. I think that this ordinance doesn't have enough description or details in it. So we're going to be sending it back to, if it passes, we're going to be sending it back to ordinance anyway for further discussion. I yield.
Are you asking, Madam Vice President, to refer this back to ordinance?
Well, we're only in first reading, so is it going to go back to ordinance anyway?
Well, are you going to act on first reading, or you want to refer it to ordinance? You're going to act on something that you want amended? Just note, just point of information for you, it's totally up to your councelment. Just note, just point of information for you, it's totally up to your constituency. Counselor Kamara?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to close this out by just underscoring that even though what city administrator was answering was not satisfactory, doesn't mean it's not truthful. There was relief to the city based upon the revenue from this industry, and there will be more relief for the beleaguered taxpayers and rent payers of this city, allowing this industry to flourish. And just one final comment, because I know that talking about Austin and being weird is going to have its longevity, but Austin is a great community. It's a music community, it's an art community, it's a capital city, and it's the seat of the University of Texas. So it's not comparable to Fall River in any way, but they're using youth to advance their creative spirit. And Fall River, I think, too, is on the verge of advancing, in fact, we're going to be voting on a motion to advance the creativity in this city. Let that creativity expand and explore the options. So I would ask my colleagues to vote no on this ordinance proposal. I yield.
And for the council, just so you know, you have a number of options here. You could entertain this motion, you can adopt it, you can table it. So if you want to table this item in council tonight, and we helped lift it from the table the next meeting, or if you'd like, you have the option to make a necessary vote. If it passes, it'll come back as second reading. If you want to amend it at second reading, you have the ability to do so. So just everybody knows, you can do that. Councilor C-7, counsel appellate.
Yeah, we have one counselor missing tonight, and we have one counselor who's not going to vote, and then I can count the other two. So I really would like to make sure that we have every member seated here when we take this vote.
Is that a motion to table?
Yes.
Motion to table has been made by counsel appellate. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by counsel vice president LaBeau. Roll call. On the motion to table.
Motion to table, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
No.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
No.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
No.
Appellateer?
Yes.
Bavaris?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Abstain.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
First reading as amended.
Motion to, is that amended?
It was amended.
It was amended, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it was amended.
It was amended in committee.
It was amended in committee, okay, thank you. Motion to adopt as amended has been made by counsel Kilby, seconded by counsel Kadeem. Discussion? Talked about it enough, roll call.
For passage to first reading as amended, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara? Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Appellateer?
Yes.
Vavarris?
No.
President Ponti?
Abstain.
Defeated.
What was the result, Madam Clerk?
Five votes required to pass an ordinance.
Madam Clerk?
Four yeas, four yeas, three nays.
Four yeas, three nays.
So per charter, five votes needed to pass the ordinance.
That's correct.
Next order of business?
Thank you, councillor, appreciate it.
That kills it?
It is dead, yes.
Ridiculous.
Pardon? Madam Clerk?
Whereas the streetscape project is now complete on East Main Street, and whereas the residents of the neighborhood are extremely dissatisfied in the quality of work performed on the roadway, and whereas there are approximately 20 areas showing poor workmanship, now therefore be it resolved that the committee on finance convene with the city engineer and a representative of the company that was awarded the contract to resolve the matter.
Motion to adopt resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Pelletier. Discussion. Council seat seven, council appellate here.
Thank you. It happens to be my neck of the woods, and let me tell you, all the money we spent up there, and the roads are awful. I don't know if you guys drive by, it's about 18, 20 cuts in a brand-new street. The lights are not up, they got caps on them, all the gears showing, it's bad. I don't know if they got bonded, but that street should be resurfaced and done right. And I'm hoping, well, we pass the resolution, let's get the engineers down here, the people who tarred that street, and the work that they've done is absolutely awful. And to say the taxpayers' money paid for this, it's absolutely crazy. So I'm looking forward to getting everybody together and asking them the questions. What happened? You go down Purchase Street, it's beautiful, they've done a good job. They had to make one cut. This here is so bad, it's unbelievable. So I'm looking forward to sitting down with these people and to figure out who is going to correct this, whoever done the tarin. I mean, it's awful. With that, Aye.
Thank you, councillor. Anything further? Council seat five, council vice president LaBeau.
Yeah, councillor Pelletier is absolutely correct. I have received a lot of complaints about the work on East Main Street and have driven it several times myself. There are patches all over the road. It doesn't look like we just spent an awful lot of money there on a streetscape. It's unfortunate, but I think we'll have some answers on the committee on finance. Aye.
Thank you. And if we could have an update from the finance team on this, when this comes back and see if everything was paid and what's still outstanding, that'd be great as well. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas the position of director of tourism and cultural affairs has been discussed numerous times in the past few years, and whereas the city of Fall River is still without this most important position, now therefore be it resolved that the committee on economic development and tourism convene to discuss this very important matter.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by council vice president LaBeau, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, sponsor of the resolution. Council seat five, council vice president LaBeau.
I've had a conversation with the city administrator about this. I'm in favor of this position. It was at one point sent to, I believe, ordinance and economic development and tourism. However, when it was in front of us in economic development and tourism, the administration came down and was pretty much looking for what we wanted to see, where they're supposed to come down and tell us, you know, what it is they want to do, and I understand they wanted some discussion. It never went anywhere in economic development, tourism. I spoke to the council secretary, and she said this was the best way to get it back in front of that committee which I chair, rather than sending it over from ordinance and back and forth. Aye.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas Fall River wishes to pursue a state-authorized cultural district through the enabling legislation, Mass. General Law, Chapter 10, Section 58A, and whereas Fall River has a mixed-use geographical area that has a concentration of cultural facilities and assets, and whereas Fall River has held the public hearing required to establish a state-designated cultural district, and whereas Fall River created a broad and diverse partnership of stakeholders committed to cultural, community, and economic development to provide oversight of the district, and whereas the Massachusetts Cultural Council will be petitioned in accordance with its guidelines and criteria to designate said cultural district, now therefore be it resolved that the committee on economic development and tourism convene with administration, corporation counsel, Sandy Dennis, and/or designee from the Creative Arts Network, and a representative from the Massachusetts Cultural Commission to discuss the proposed geographical boundaries and agreement necessary to create said cultural district, and in doing so agrees to foster the development of a cultural district, endorses the state-sponsored cultural district goals, attracting artists and cultural enterprises, encouraging business and job development, establishing tourist destinations, preserving and reusing historic buildings, enhancing property values, and fostering local cultural development. Will appoint a city official to represent the city within the district partnership of said cultural district. Will encourage all who own property or businesses within the cultural district to involve themselves and participate in the full development of the district, and will direct city agencies to identify programs and services that could support and enhance the development of the cultural district, and ensure that those programs and services are accessible to the cultural district.
Motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by council vice president LaBeau, seconded by councillor Kilby. Discussion. Council seat five, sponsor of the resolution, council vice president LaBeau.
Thank you. I've been working with Mrs. Dennis on this for the last month or so. She had indicated at one point that the mayor was in support of this. So we set a meeting with corporation counsel and the city administrator, and they are looking for more details and clarifications on a couple of items, and rightfully so. I think the mayor was in support of it overall, but as far as the fine details, I don't think that conversation happened. So we're going to send this to, again, the committee that I chair and get those questions answered so that the administration can fully know what it is that they are agreeing to. And I'm hopeful they'll still support it. That I yields.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing no further discussion. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas Bristol Elder Services Incorporated has pledged towards making Fall River a dementia-friendly community in accordance with dementia-friendly Massachusetts and dementia-friendly America, and whereas Bristol Elder Services Incorporated has convened a dementia-friendly coalition consisting of members of the greater Fall River community, and whereas the coalition plans to expand its dementia-friendly efforts by adding age-friendly work as defined by the AARP network, now therefore be it resolved that the Fall River City Council supports the coalition's current efforts to make Fall River a dementia-friendly community, and be it further resolved that the Fall River City Council supports the coalition's plans to make Fall River both age and dementia-friendly.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt has been made by councillor Camara, seconded by councillor Kilby. Discussion. Sponsor of the resolution, council seat three, councillor Camara.
Yeah, just briefly, you've received background information on this, and I note in particular, I would actually ask you to take a look at the third handout, which are the communities that are currently either active age-friendly or emerging age-friendly, dementia-friendly, and memory cafe, age-friendly university. So Fall River has an opportunity to be on that map. I would ask you for the support of this resolution. Aye.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Have the order granting permission to Anthony DeSilva for a driveway access of eight feet for a total of 20 feet at 115 Earl Street.
Motion to adopt is made by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have an order granting permission to Walid Asse at 2809 Highland Avenue for the removal of an additional 12 feet of curving for a total of 22 feet.
Is there a motion, folks?
Move to approve the order.
Motion to adopt is made by councillor Stephen Camara, seconded by, is there a second? Seconded by councillor Pelletier. Discussion on the motion?
There's a lot of discussion.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Anybody? Anybody opposed? Anybody in favor of it?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Have an order granting permission to Pat Mayo at 257 Rathgar Street for the removal of an additional eight feet of curving for a total of 20 feet.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the police chief's report.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, the police chief's report has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a number of claims.
Refer to corporation counsel.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by council vice, councillor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have an application from Steppingstone for permission to place a banner over 134 Derby Street for the Get Stepping Walk line.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by council vice president LaBeau. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have an open meeting law complaint filed by Colin Dias.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel is made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have a second open meeting law complaint also by Colin Dias.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Stephen Camara. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 29 is a communication from the attorney general's office acknowledging the response that was issued and notifying the council that the complaint has been closed, matter has been closed.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good job.
Item number 30 is also a determination from the Division of Open Government and another open meeting law complaint that had been filed, and it has also been closed.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And 31 is the same, it's a determination, and the matter was closed.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to accept 32 and 34.
Second.
Motion to take items 32, 33, and 34 together has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to approve items 32 through 34 would be appropriate.
So moved.
Motion to make, approve items 32, 33, and 34 has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to take items 35 to 38.
Motion to take items 35, 36, 37, 38 has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept items 35, 36, 37, 38, after reading, have been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Kilby. To accept and place on file has been made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, just read those real quick.
The items that were accepted are communications from the Beta Group regarding the replacement of Weaver Street over Mass. Coastal Roadway, Mass. DOT notice of filing in a public hearing and procedural conference regarding the MBTA South Coast Rail Project, and 37 and 38 were AMIPA environmental notifications regarding the downtown and waterfront urban renewal plans.
Is there anything further, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have the one resolution that was filed during citizens' input.
Before we do that, council seat five, council vice president LaBeau.
Can I get clarification, council president or clerk? If I do a motion to reconsider item 16, someone's on the prevailing side, I don't want the, right now it's dead, correct? We would have to, a council would have to start the process over, put it to council, back to ordinance.
Yes.
And I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of more discussion, if that's even possible, and maybe an amendment to what's in front of us. I'm not in favor of it dying altogether. So that would keep it, if I reconsidered, that would keep it in council with a yes vote, correct?
Yes.
Was she on the prevailing side?
Yes.
She was. Okay.
She was not on the prevailing side.
She prevailed four to three, but you didn't have enough, you didn't have five for the ordinance, so I'm not sure. More than a negative.
Well, she has every right to vote to reconsider. She was on that side, is that correct, Madam Clerk? The correct side to do that?
She was in the, she was on the prevailing side.
She was not on the prevailing side?
No.
So...
But it didn't pass. It failed.
Then I'll do the motion to reconsider. I was on the prevailing side.
Motion to reconsider has been made by councillor Long. Is there a second?
Just a point of our parliamentary procedure, Ms. Lullaby LaBeau was on the prevailing side.
Prevaling, because it failed.
She was on the, it failed. She was no.
That is correct. So council vice president, you have a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider, thank you very much, council seat three. Motion to reconsider has been made by council vice president LaBeau. Is there, is there a second? Seconded by councillor Pelletier. Discussion. Council seat five, council vice president LaBeau.
I just want to be clear, this is because I want the discussion to continue. I didn't want it to die altogether.
Okay, this is just on the motion to reconsider at this point. Roll call.
On reconsideration, councillors Cadim?
Yes.
Joseph Camara? Stephen Camara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Vavarris?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Abstain.
Move to refer back to ordinance committee.
Motion to refer back to ordinance has been made by councillor Stephen Camara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council vice president LaBeau. Discussion. Council seat six, councillor Long.
I thought the original motion was passed through first reading.
Well, there is a motion.
Why you gonna send it back to my committee?
Original motion was to table.
Because we discussed it in the long face. There's no, there's no other information that we're going to do in committee that's going to have anything.
Any impact on this. Council seat four, councillor Kilby.
I may be wrong, but the motion to reconsider prevailed, so now we have to take a vote on the motion that was defeated last night. Because we made a motion to reconsider that vote. So, just kidding.
What can I do? City council's in recess. All you have to do is make up. Madam Clerk, reintroduce the item that the city council will be voting on.
So this would be the proposed ordinance that relates to the marijuana facilities and licenses.
Point of information, I know what you're going to say, because I just heard it, just for council that wanted the reconsideration. So if we approve this, we approve the first reading, so you're going to say that we can't refer it to committee thereafter, you can make a motion to refer it to committee.
Correct.
Point, again, parliamentary procedure. You could certainly motion to approve through first reading and refer it back as one motion, or you can do a motion just to refer it back to ordinance committee for discussion. Either would be appropriate. Either takes precedent over the motion to adopt.
Right, but we have to vote on the motion that is currently before us that we reconsidered, correct, Madam Clerk?
A motion to refer takes precedent.
Council seat five, council vice president LaBeau.
A yes on this would keep it in full council, correct? And we could make an amendment on second reading in full council?
You can, yes.
With more information.
It's not final this evening.
It is not final. You have every right to amend it at the next council meeting.
But it seems as if if we send it back to ordinance, a discussion takes place, it's going to come back for a second reading this council, and the exact same conversation's going to take place again, so it might as well just stay right here.
There's nothing stopping this council from calling the city administration down and amending it at our next city council meeting at second reading. If you don't want to refer it back to committee, that's what you have to do. That's your option. There can be any motion that the council wants to put on.
All right, now we're just retaking the vote?
Retaking the vote to pass through first reading as amended. Madam Clerk, roll call.
For passage through first reading as amended, councillors Cadim?
Yes.
Joseph Camara? Stephen Camara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Vavarris?
No.
President Ponti?
Abstain. Next order of business.
Be it resolved that the city council committee on public works and transportation convene with city administrator Kathy Ann Vavarris, city engineer J.R. Frye, and director of the Department of Community Maintenance, John Perry, to pursue a solution to the issue of making Melrose Street totally accessible for the residents of 239 Melrose Street.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt is made by councillor Stephen Camara, seconded by councillor Cadim. Discussion, council seat one, councillor Cadim.
Could I just ask, when it goes to Public Works Committee, that, and I'm sure the engineer will also make sure of this, but that the roadway is wide enough for our apparatus to get any type of emergency vehicles down there?
That, Madam Clerk? Motion, hearing no further discussion before this council, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made by councillor Cadim.
Can I make a quick comment first?
Absolutely. Council seat four, councillor Kilby.
It's unnecessary to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. For people who are watching, you know, these meetings, thank you for, Mr. President, for showing your leadership and taking that recess, because at times we want to get it right, and we want to take our time, we want to deliberate, we want to get advice from our city clerk. So, again, I just want to comment, for those who are watching, I don't want anyone to think that members of this council are, you know, conducting a meeting through chaos or, you know, just, my point is, we did the right thing, I think, in terms of deliberating the issue, getting the vote right. You may now agree with the vote, but we followed, I think, the rules that should have been followed. Thank you, Madam Clerk and Mr. President.
Thank you. Good work, team. Motion has been made to adjourn and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Good night. Thank you.[1777.26]